Good evening. I'd like to start off by thanking everyone that assisted in putting this event together and those of y'all that are here with us tonight. My name is Christopher McBride and I'm a candidate for Place Six of Boyd ISD School Board. On a side note, I'd like to thank my wife and children who have been extremely supportive during my first attempt to run for public office. To provide voters with a little bit of background, both my wife and myself are from Fort Worth, but moved to Boyd in 2019 with our two girls. We attend First Baptist Boyd. I'm the Regional Director of Field Operations for Holt Construction and we are a family that enjoys the rodeo. That's enough about me. Let's talk about why we're here tonight. There are several issues I'm passionate about that are affecting our district. They range from infrastructure to CTE programs. I'm very passionate about accountability and transparency. Accountability is one of the keystone to any district's success and it is a requirement that the community and the public have of a board to justify their actions and decisions. With accountability comes transparency. The board should be able and encouraged to share their thoughts, opinions, and decisions openly with the community and the district it was elected to represent. Many voters in the Boyd School District feel as though the board doesn't provide enough transparency. Sure, there's transparency for the budget and financials, but where is the transparency for how the board and the district are addressing the infrastructure needs? Where is the transparency and accountability for the superintendent? Where is the transparency for the accountability of the board? Is there an annual review process for the current board members to where they can receive feedback from the community, ISD staff, parents, on how they can better improve their decisions? To solve that, I'd like to create a small community co-op to work with the board on major issues like infrastructure needs, teacher welfare, CTE program expansions, et cetera. I believe it would allow more accountability in providing resolutions for these items and lead to a more inclusive relationship between the district, board, and community. In a letter, one of the things I would like to adjust is the way that we forecast growth and progress to our area, voting on measures that can ensure that we have the proper infrastructure and resources for the staff to provide the very best education for our students. Another topic... Go ahead. I thought you were gonna raise your 22nd bill. Another topic I'm passionate about is CTE. I would also like to grow and expand the CTE program in Boyd ISD. Not all students graduate and transition to college. According to shrn.org, more than 75 million baby boomers retired sooner than later due to the pandemic. There aren't enough Gen X workers and Gen Z is behind in what they're able to accomplish as far as experience. Any questions?
I don't have a computer or anything to look at. I've got our old iPhone. My name is Matt Tadic. I'm here for Boyd Place Seven. My wife and I moved to Boyd also in 2019 from Hasslett, from Northwest Iowa State, who is one of the fastest-growing districts in the state. We moved to Boyd for our youngest daughter. This is a little teary-eyed for me because she's got dyslexia and she went to Eaton High School. If y'all ever go down to 287, Eaton High School is there on the right-hand side. It kinda looks like a college campus. She was a number there. Now Boyd, when she got there, she's no longer a number, she's a person. I really feel like Boyd ISD does good for their students in that aspect. However, Boyd ISD is growing. We got approximately 1,200 homes going up in Boyd. Right now, we're not ready for it. Current board didn't even make a plan to be ready for it until just this year. 1,200 homes, approximately, what, 1.5 students per home is what everybody's saying now. They're wanting to split .5. So, we're not ready for the growth. We need to get up and get ready now. Another thing is the CTEs as well. I didn't go to college. I went to TCC to get my certification in Emergency Medical Technician. I'm an AMT by trade. I'm also a medical assistant. I work for one of the best hospitals around. Yes, there is WISE Health Systems, but there's also Texas Health Systems. That's who I work for. So, not everyone goes to college. My brother, who grew up in Keller, we all grew up in Keller, except for my wife, she grew up in Oklahoma. It's okay. I still love her. My brother didn't go to college either. He's a retired paramedic, paramedic from Garland, 27 years. Works for American Airlines now, still has, since 85. Our oldest brother, he's a CPA. We call him the smartest woman of the bunch. He calls us the smartest ones of the bunch because we don't have student loans. But, you know, in reality, we need to go ahead and start now. Start for growth now. Stop the bullying process in Boyd and other districts. And I can help the district do this. I was bullied myself, well, been on both sides. So, I know what it looks like and I know how to respond to it. Thank you all.
My name is Paul Flat. I'm running for Bridgeport ISD Place One. My wife and I, we've lived in Bridgeport now going on five years. We have been there, just being part of the community. We have three kids. I've got a daughter and two sons. All have now graduated to the college and out of home and they all went to public school. I want to be on the school board because I think I can make a difference. I think we've all seen what's been going on in the news about different school districts and what's been going on in different school districts. And I think with my conservative background, being in church all my life, I think that's what our school board needs, is somebody with that type of ideology and what will help our school district grow and be safe for our kids. You know, in our school district, we've got a great school district, but as our numbers grow in the schools, so do the problems grow. And I think we need to take a stance now where we just rein things in and keep our community conservative. I also want to base the school board on advancing education for our kids. That would be my main goal, is to see that happen. New programs for kids going into college, doing dual credit, and then also for giving certifications to those kids that don't want to go to college. And we have many of those. Not everybody's designed to go to college. You know, some kids have the heart to use their hands and that's what we need to foster, is that in those kids. You know, every kid deserves an opportunity. You know, if you look at the stats for Bridgeport ISD, well, let's look at the state first. Texas ranks, and depending on what you read, we rank 43rd in the nation. That's crazy. You know, we need to do something about that. You know, for Bridgeport ISD, our 1,200 schools, Bridgeport ranked 757th in our state. That's atrocious. We need to do something about that. And if I'm elected to be part of the school board, I want to work on that and get that up. You know, there is no reason to be in the lower third of the school districts in our great state. You know, that's atrocious. You know, parents, if I'm elected, I work for you. I don't work for the superintendent. I work for you and your kids. And I'm gonna do my job to make sure that you get the best education and that is gonna be my goal. I'm gonna be an ally. I'm gonna be there for you. Feel well for me, Paul Flat, Place One, Bridgeport.
I'm happy that another candidate in that race is here. From Chico ISD, we have...
Hey, first time today, y'all for having, hosting this event tonight to let us air our view. I grew up in Chico, Texas. My name is Cindy Buckner Bucksel, on God. And I went K through 12 through Chico ISD. I'm a Dragon alum. I'm a Texas Tech or Raider alum. And a North Texas Eagle alum. My foundations were set in my early years there in Chico. First, my foundation was in Jesus Christ and my Savior. And then my parents are very well-known servant leaders. And then my experiences in FFA and 4H and the College and Career readiness that was there at Chico when I went through there was part of what helped me become a success. Where I bring a different viewpoint is that I'm in the last six weeks of my 26th year as an educator and I'll continue to be an educator in a different school district. And while many will say COVID caused issues in education, I would say COVID highlighted the issues that were already there. And so, what made me perk up and listen to the things going on in Chico ISD was a board investigation in 2020 which targeted some employees but did not target the problems with transcripts that were happening at that time. Then the superintendent, with his now principal, or his former principal's statement in a recorded Zoom board meeting in January of 2021, when he said, "It keeps telling up at night that the salutatorians cannot even make it to a four-year university," and he had to come home, and they had to come home in the middle of the year to attend a junior college. And then this year, they transitioned to a four-day week. I think the focus needs to be securing resources that will build College, Career, and Military Readiness, or CCMR, Industrial Certifications, and improvement in all academics, including your college readiness, dual-credit courses, down to your special education courses and earnings. It's hard to find some things in their handbook or online about CCMR and what the opportunities are there. And there just needs a review of policies altogether, mainly because like I can't find the grading policy is even published. And so, when you look in the handbook, it says that the teacher will tell the parents what the grading policy is. And when you look in the online board, it says that they will, the district will adopt a grading policy, but nowhere can you actually find a published grading policy. Well, that affects grade, that affects GPA, that affects ranking. It's very important for that to be communicated to everybody on how that works. You can't have somebody grading this way and someone grading that way. So, that's one thing. Because the main thing is that I understand the difficulty of the last two years in education. And like I said, COVID highlighted some of those issues. And those of us with the biggest on the ground need to start taking time to discuss that. Thank you.
Thank you for having me speak tonight. So, my name is Steven Seidel. I'm actually running against Cindy Buckner Bucksel here for Place Four in Chico ISD. Born and raised in Texas in a small town similar to Chico, from the south in San Antonio. I spent 10 years in the service right after, right before 9/11. I've dedicated my life to this country and I'm seeing things in our school district that raises our children that is just not right. Right? And it starts with accountability, like some gentleman said earlier. We need to take control of the students. We need to make sure that we are teaching the children the right way and that's on us as leaders. And I have seen through meetings, through conversations inside Chico ISD, that there's a very distinct lack of accountability at multiple different levels in the district. So, my job is to try to step in and give that example, be the voice for parents, and let our children have the opportunity that we had and make sure that we're doing it the right way. So, throughout my time in Chico, which has been since 2014, it's just been progressively getting worse and worse and worse. And we hear it from teachers, we hear it from parents, we hear it from students, and it's about time somebody else steps up and does something and not the old guard. It's been the same core folks on ISD for years and it's not getting done. So, somebody else has to step up. I think there's a lot of opportunity to start teaching kids about other avenues other than college. I did not go to college until I was in the service. I got my degree while I was on active duty. That is not a bad thing. It's nothing to be embarrassed about. We don't have to go to new-to universities. My dad's a mechanic. He's been a mechanic for 40 years. He's earned a living the right way. He's done things the right way and it's okay to teach children that. We live in a farming community. There's opportunities in the farming community and we don't have to rely on any kind of grants or student loans or anything like that to put our children in debt. My wife is suffering from that right now, 71,000 in student loan debt. To become a psychologist at $13,000 now, a social worker. That there's no digging yourself out of that hole. And I think the more that we focus on getting things right at the foundation, the better we're enabling the future of our neighborhood, our county, our state, and our country. And that's why I'm running for this district. It's about time to change things and quit doing business as usual expecting a different result. Thank you.
We have a Chico ISD candidate here tonight. I would take this to Decatur ISD, which we have a number of them. Go ahead and start on there.
Thank you very much. My name is Chris Lawrie. I am currently sitting president for the Decatur Board of ISD. I have, this is my third term of career elected. I am from Harrah, Texas. Lived there my whole life until age 26, when my wife and I got married back in 1994. We've lived in Decatur ever since. We live in the same house. We've had three kids go through Decatur, K through 12, that are two of them are pre-grad in college and one of them is still in college. It's funny, I sit here and listen to everyone talk about what each town wants for their school. We all want the same thing. I mean, everyone up there wants their kids to have the best education possible. They want their teachers to love their job. They love the ones who work their day, have the best facilities possible. And the way you did that is you hired the right people to do that. The board only has so much power. We really do. It's the few people you put in place to make this thing happen. Over the past couple of years, I thought we missed some pieces in Decatur. We really have. We made some changes. We made some incredible hires, some incredible hires that will help us get where we want to be. We've got a great superintendent. We have a great athletic director. We have a great hospital principal. We have a great principal at Grand. But all the other towns, we have the same grade of principal we've had in the past. It's just a matter of putting the right people in the right places. We can't do it all ourselves as a board. We have to hire the people that we trust that can do whatever they're willing to do for us. That's the main thing for Decatur right now, is we have to put the people in place to do what needs to be done. I think that's the most important thing that we can do. Same thing is we can just legally be advocates for the parents, for the people. Every board member up here is an open door for the public. We have to realize that we can do so much and if you come to us, if you see problems and we see issues, we go straight to Dr. Jones to communicate. Dr. Jones, it's his job, it's not our job. So, that's one thing that we're gonna be fighting is just a lot of social, emotional issues, this CRT. We are a very conservative town and we need to keep our school conservative as well. This is something we've got to continue to fight. I know that there's a governor advocacy for the law that says you can't have too CRT. We have SEL, but it will slowly sink into the system unless you keep your eyes and ears open at all times. We have to continue to be ears and an ear to listen to it and the parents so that we know what we're gonna do, send down to Dr. Jones. Decatur's a great place to be. It's the county's single last town. We're not using the other towns. I don't do anything bad, but it's the biggest town in the county. We have the biggest budget. And one of our main things we've got to do is our bond issue. We have to pass a bond. The way you pass a bond is not by the board. The board has to do it, it's too many people that can pass a bond. Dr. Jones passed a bond in things from where he came from. We've got a superintendent that can help us pass a bond. We've gotta get our facilities operated. Women have seven or eight women's buildings at the Imperial Middle School. We don't want that. And lastly, I'll end on this, like I said, we all want the same thing. We do. If you like the direction we gave us running right now, then obviously vote for Chris Lawrie. If you want to change, obviously vote for Stan Schultze. I have no problem with whichever vote you make, because we're doing this for the kids and not for ourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you again for allowing us to have some time to speak to you all. My name is Amanda Donkey. I'm running for Place One of Decatur ISD. Just a little bit about me. We've lived here for 11 years now. We had our children up here when they were very small. The city life was just not something we wanted our kids to grow up in. We're looking for something smaller, something more family-oriented, and we felt that Decatur was the place to do that. There's been a lot of discussion about college and kids that don't go to college and it's good either way. There's no knocking it either direction. I think it's important that we work on the growth we have here in Decatur. Yes, we're gonna have to pass a bond. I volunteered on the facilities committee a year and a half ago that actually put together a bunch of stuff for a bond and I hope that we can move forward with that because we are behind and we already have facilities overrun with children and teachers circulating classrooms. That cannot be a great environment there. As a board member, it is our job to be part of that communication process between the parents and the district. Keeping that communication fluid is incredibly important. We are one stepping stone to protecting the children in every single way from CRT and social, emotional learning. But, like Chris Lawrie said, we are the board. We are not the people on the ground that are bootstrapped. So, it's important that we hire excellent educators to go in there and take care of our kids because they're worth some $8 a day. I guess a little more background about me. I'm a first year. I do work for a cell system. So, I am local. I'm also volunteer fathering for a department in our county. I have four children, one of which has graduated from Decatur ISD recently and will finish her degree in education this next year. So, making sure that our teachers are happy and feel like they have a work environment that they can work in and actually teach our children is incredibly important to me and her future, of course. There's a lot of people running for Place One, so please do your diligence to take some time and discuss with each one of us what is important to us and how we feel like we can help the board move forward and help this district grow with the growth that we have coming. CTE is incredibly important to me. I have two gentlemen that have participated in CTE programs and will probably not continue to college, but will obtain certifications as well. We don't have the facilities for that. We have a very minimal teacher capacity. We need more for these children to learn in a safe environment. They are playing with pretty powerful tools out there. So, this is important. Thank you.
My name is Stan Schultz and I'm running for Place Two, Decatur ISD School Board. Thanks to the wise Republican women for putting this on, for all of you taking time out of your schedules to show up. A little bit of background for me. I was born in Decatur, raised in Decatur, my parents graduated Decatur, I could go on and on and on, all that. And I'm one of nine kids, all Decatur graduates. I only tell you that because that doesn't make me more special or give me a leg up on anybody else. It just, I just wanted you to know that because of the deep affinity I have for Decatur. I love Decatur. I love Wise County. I've got family that have gone back for generations, back to Boyd, to Chico, and other communities around the county. I'm only running for school board because I want the same things probably that Chris and Amanda and everybody else has said, same things everybody else wants. I mean, I don't think there's anybody up here that says, "I've got a set agenda and we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that." We want the best for our students and we're gonna do everything we possibly can. As mentioned before, I mean, it all starts with creating a culture and environment that is good for our teachers and our other educators, administrators, and really all employees in the ISD. They have got to feel appreciated. It starts to be rewarded by whether it's administrators, the taxpayers, anybody in the community, any stakeholder. Once they are happy and once they want to come to school every day and they're excited about coming to school, that excitement transforms over to your students. And then the students want to come. I was asked the other day by someone, said, "Did you have a favorite teacher?" And I see a couple guys I went to high school with here and they probably come back. We had a great teacher, Ray Dasker, that a real lot of you know. And she made it fun for me to come to school every day. I loved going to her class. And we've got a lot of teachers right now in our district that are just like that, that are very inspired and they are promoting kindness and caring and inclusivity for all of our kids because we're only as good as the weakest part of our student body. We've got to raise all students up. And I'm a firm believer that we can do this. We can create that kind of environment. We've got a lot of resources here. As mentioned before, we are behind the curve on facilities. We need to take care of that. We've got some short-term needs, particularly middle school, but we also, we're soon gonna be at capacity at our high school as well. So, we've got to address those, but we've also got long-term because everybody's seeing the growth that's coming out of 380, coming out of 287, and we've got to be able to address that. So, we need a 10- to 20-year plan and I want to be a part of that. And I think with my experience and background in the corporate world where I spent four years, I think I can bring that to this community and help. So, I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
My name's Scott Keeler and these guys are taking all my thunder. We're all chasing the same path on our goals. I got interested early last fall with some of our issues in Decatur we had with superintendents and athletic directors and methodology and how to manage that. I did get involved with the board. I spoke a lot to Chris and Jenny and some of the other board members and did a lot of my homework and found out that we have grievance policies that we have to get involved with. They can only do so much on the board, but we can do a lot up to the grievance policy. TEA has a whole bunch of lists on how we do this and eventually it escalated up to the top of the grievance, Jeff Patel, for the TEA, and then things started happening. So, we have a lot of methods that are available to us, but we need to let folks realize that we're here. And it's important for the parents to get involved and not just to think that the school board, the superintendent, the teacher are impossible. Our schools are just a tool for us raising our kids. I think we feel like, I feel like that we throw our kids in there and wonder why they're not educated. That's not how I was raised and y'all probably won't raise that way either. We've got to go back to roots. We want them to do, teach our morals, but we're not teaching our morals. We want them to do everything for us and then we wonder why. So, getting back to some of my priorities, is leadership, stability. If we're gonna run around and just do what we want to do and meet our own partisan goal, we're not gonna have stability. We're not gonna have quality leaders. We're not gonna have good superintendents. They're not gonna come here. They're gonna go somewhere else. So, stability first, so we can have good superintendents, good principals, good teachers. Let them know where to be or if they're gonna be around for a while. If we have grievances with it, let's work on that. We don't have to just throw everything out and start over. We can work through some of our issues. Some of our hot issues right now, here are laws and regulations already restricting in Texas, but we talk about and it's a distraction, it's noise, and we're not focusing on the reality that we need to focus on. So, for us in Decatur, some of the hot topics again, or what I think our priorities are is our infrastructure. There's a big need with all the growth coming in our community. And my background, the background in infrastructure management from Auburn University, so I do have a little bit of inside information on how long it takes to happen. And if we're behind, I think of what it takes to make this happen in the timeframe that I think it needs to happen. We're being, we have assessments going on and we're working on it, but I think we can exploit that. A lot of this got slowed down with the pandemic, of course. So, those are priorities. And then also, I'm a huge fan of our STEM program and I'm, there's a lot of, you've got 20 seconds, I'm in trouble. There's a lot of misinformation on STEM and basically it's interactive training. It's hands-on training. It's the same trade programs that folks are talking about wanting. That's what STEM is. It's engineering. It's math. It's using our skill sets and it's using our interactive hands to engage with the kids instead of just lecturing and I'm done. So, I have a blog on the website. If you come see me, you can call me. No, thank you, guys.
Scott, come back up here and finish or kind of bring it up career. Thanks for having us. Thanks for allowing us to energize ourselves to you guys. My name is Melissa McCoy. My husband and I moved to Decatur about five years ago from down the road in Azul, where I taught for 15 years as a high school English teacher. I finished up an 18-year teaching career at Decatur High School, as a teacher for the past three years. This is my This is my first year out of the classroom and in the fall, my heart was very heavy. Everybody, all my friends going back to school, all the kids going back to school. So I really kept in touch with them. I started subbing in the fall. I've subbed a lot at Carson Elementary. I've subbed a couple times at the high school. And I had a lot of people reach out to me, a lot of educators, and they're like, you know, we would like you to run for school board. We think that your experience in education would be an asset to the board. And so that's why I decided to run. I really have a heart for Decatur. I have a heart for teachers, for educators, for our students, for our community, and that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
I think that's all we have for Decatur ISD, and I believe we have one from Northwest ISD.
Good evening. I'm Anne Davidson-Simpson. And I want to first thank you all for hosting this event so well organized. And thank you all for attending because I know how busy everyone's schedule is. I am known for Place 3 on the Board of Prestige in Northwest ISD. This will begin, this will end my ninth year on the board. And we are the fastest-growing district, I believe, in the metroplex and possibly in the state. And our neighbors, Boyd and Decatur, the growth on 287 and 114 is definitely coming your way. And we are working very hard to be prepared with our buildings, but also with our academic programs, to meet the needs of students who live in three different counties because we serve Denton County, Tarrant County, and Wise County. So we have a very large area and we are becoming quite diverse and that folks are coming in from all over the country. And we want to be sure that they're welcome and genuine. We mentioned his daughter, what are you? These schools are large and we really do want there to be a personal interest in every student so that we can meet their needs. I am a career educator. I spent, started out in 4th grade, taught middle school, then I moved into central office position for several years and then ended my career in teacher education at Texas Women's University. My husband and I have lived in the community all of our lives. We're graduates of Northwest. We own a business in Northlake, a construction business. My father was a dairy farmer in Haslip before the airport. So we have a love of this community and we have a love of all of our communities that surround us. Most of all, in Northwest, we want kids to come first and that is really our goal. So we look forward to serving you as members of the Board of Prestiges because it's together that you can put our children first.
Okay, we have a number of candidates up here and I've got some stop questions that I can ask. And we can go back through the line again and it might end up all the time that we have. Or we can ask you if you have any questions, because y'all showed up from all over. I think that in order to move through and get as many questions in as possible, if you could state which district you are from and you can ask your candidates the question and then they can respond. And we'll try to move around to get all the districts, you know, the questions asked. So the Decatur question, the Bridgeport question, the Chico question, does that make sense? Now the candidates, you can have one minute each to respond to these questions. And I think I saw your hand go up first. If you could stand and tell us where you're going and what's the question?
Yeah, and I, my yes or no question.
Just speak loud because we don't know.
Oh, we are. No, no, I'm in Decatur ISD, I have a dress, the school board in Decatur ISD, I have a dress, Northwest, I have a dress. And I'm going to Chico tomorrow, so I think this is for all of you. It's a simple yes or no question. It's not really simple, but it is a yes or no question. Given that we know that there are multiple young people in our schools, there are eight in freshman class at Decatur ISD who identify as either transgender or somewhere along the gender spectrum, which is a lie. Do you, as a school board member, will you propose and be for a policy that says in our ISD, gender is determined by biological reality?
Amen.
Yes or no? Will you support, will you support policy that at your school district, gender is determined by biological reality?
I will not vote for a policy. I will not vote for a policy because I can't. That's a moral, ethical thing. We've got to raise our kids. It's our Christian faith. I can't go, my Bible doesn't teach me to condemn everybody. It teaches me to judge everybody. It teaches me to live and work with people of different backgrounds.
So no?
Well, yes, I said that at the start. But the point is, is that I can't witness to people if I'm not around them. And that's my job. My job is to be around anybody and everybody and witness with my faith. So I would definitely say no.
Paul, anybody else?
Uh, yes. That's it. There's nothing in between. Sorry.
That's a yes from me as well. I think the purpose of the school is to get every kid graduated. Every kid's gotta get smarter. Regardless of their feelings, the yes is for the first one, the yes I will. But every kid will be proved the same, regardless of what their beliefs are. Our job to teach students, to educate them as great as possible, that they will go to school, be ready for life, and in all its places. So yes.
Yes, I will. We are here for an education on core basic classes. We're not here to discuss sexual orientation. You certainly don't want to hear about my sex life. You don't want to hear about the teacher's sex life. That's not what we're here for. However, with you, these are our children. They are our future. They are moldable things. And it's important that we teach them respect, kindness, and love in every aspect.
Yeah, you're acting a real fine like yes or no. There's a lot more to this. So the answer is, do I believe that there are two genders? Yes, I did. Okay? So there it is. But I'd ask you, what is the policy that you're trying to implement? Because I'm not gonna support something that's gonna ostracize. I'm not giving a break. In Decatur ISD, gender is determined by biological reality. So when that student is wanting to have their programs changed, there's no, there's no middle ground on that. Your gender is determined by your biological reality. And no teacher or student will be compelled to refer to you by anything other than what your biological reality is.
As they already have the policy, you don't have to have a school policy.
Yes, you do have to have a school policy. There is no policy. There is no policy. What?
We're not gonna get around everything. We'll just go back and forth like that.
I welcome stuff from, I've visited with our superintendent several times. I've visited with high-level people within our, it is not an issue. They are dealing with this on a one-on-one basis, which is the way it should be dealt with. If we put policies and procedures in for everything, it's just gonna become a big mess. And that's my personal feeling.
This is a hard question. I agree with them. It's gray. It's not black or white. It's not yes or no. I agree too that you're either born a female or a male. Now, if the question was, do I support transgender athletes? No. But am I gonna go after a policy that says you have to? I'm not gonna do that either. So I guess you're not gonna like that answer, but I guess my answer is no. Transgender athletes? No. Not allowed, not acceptable. I am a Christian. I do believe that you are born one way or the other. However, I don't think that it's the board's duty, policy, place to institute a policy like that. And again, that's been addressed by Governor Abbott. Like, that's a state thing that's already been addressed.
And that is all our Decatur candidates with any of the other candidates left aside.
I would say, how I would, yeah, I would, how I would address the policy is that to address the student by whatever is on their legal birth certificate. And that's what I already do because I can't keep up with 600 different kids, like what they want to be talking about.
That's what I'm asking.
Now, the rest of that is dip. You have to have compassion on how you handle that. They're Native, transgender, and LGBTQ students. It's very hard. You have to have compassion on how you handle that, how you work with those kids, and how you talk with those kids. They also have the right to be respected. But I would totally support that we follow whatever is on the legal birth certificate of that student.
Sure, the answer is yes. I agree with you on that. And I would also emphasize that we don't try to treat that student any different than anybody else or give them any additional privileges or anything like that and focus on the poor students.
Thank you.
Yes, I would support something of that nature. I believe what she mentioned, that so it would be a way to stop transgender athletes from competing in an athletic event that was not built for them, possibly with her from Chico. And what she said, we have to have a soft approach in the manner in which we deal with it and put that type of policy in place.
All right. Okay, these are the Bridgeport questions. Somebody from Bridgeport. Okay. Can you tell me what a relationship is between the SHAC and the board in a school? Define what they are.
Well, SHAC is our school health advisory council. And as an advisory council, SHAC is supposed to work with, you know, the school boards in making sure that our curricula or health is in line with, you know, the community. Right now, you know, for Bridgeport, it's kind of a growing thing. I know that for SHAC, there's supposed to be five parents on that council. And I'm not sure right now we even have that. So, but it's a good way for parents to get involved. We need to, we need to make sure that, you know, we are teaching our kids some things, but not very explicit sexual things. I think that's for home.
A Chico or a Boyd ISD question? Anybody?
Anything's easy after that first.
Or Northwest ISD? We've got to see how we're coming down here. Are there any more questions for Decatur before I go to the stop questions?
My question would be, do you all believe that, I'm basing this off of Stan's video. Do you all believe we have a CRT issue in our schools even though Governor Abbott has passed a law that we're not allowed to teach in schools? Do you all believe that that is an issue or can be an issue, even though it's in the past? I'm gonna answer that first, Mark. Please. So, can it be an issue? It can, sure, it can be. And you certainly want to be on guard about it. Is it an issue right now? From everything I can tell, and again, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a parent, and that's all that. I'm not on the school board right now. I don't have the insight that, you know, that Chris has because he's already on the school board or Mel or anyone else that's here. But from the people, I've talked to a lot of people, they do not believe that it is being taught and that it will ever be taught and that we all are gonna be on guard about it. So I think that's a little short answer to that.
Similar to the last one, Senate Bill 3 says we can't do this. You cannot sit there and be partisan on any topic. We can't teach that way. So if a teacher is wrong, it'll be, we have policies, we have methodologies to address that. And whether they continue, they're terminated, or they can redirect them. That CRT that they're on since '70s, this year, last year, has become a hot topic. Race isn't real. Of course it is, but it's better today than it was then. And so these are the noise in the room. This is, people come in distracting us from educating our kids. It's not happening. And if it is happening, we have grievous policies. You address your teacher, you address the principal, you address the superintendent, it escalates up to the T E A. And they go, it's grievous. So we can fix this. It doesn't have to have a policy that says, "Yes, we can do this." We're parents. We're citizens. We can do this.
Being on that current board, I can say it is not a problem today. I've talked about it several times. At the same time, we always have to carry it because even though there is going to have a House bill passed, which I will agree, which outballs teaching and CRT, we all know that certain things should seek in without everyone's knowledge. That's the main reason, I think, as someone said, we have to be, we have to have parents' help. We have to, I don't have a kid in school anymore. I'm not gonna know what that was being taught unless someone tells me. Go through the proper channels and if it's being taught, we'll address it immediately after.
I think it boils back down to communication. You need to be involved in your child's education and if you see something, you need to speak up. The board is not there combing through every grade level's work of paperwork and whatever assignments they're doing. However, just this last week, Paradise ISD 6th grade history had a little tidbit of CRT in there. It's there, you guys. We buy programs of, programs for our education from different publishing companies all over this country. They don't care what Texas bill has been passed. They're gonna do their best to slip things in. If A bill is right or whatever they believe, it's our job to monitor these and hire great educators that are also going to monitor the situation to protect our children.
So I can speak from experience, right? I just came out of the classroom. I was not teaching that. My coworkers were not teaching that. I've been in Carson Elementary. From what I've seen in Carson Elementary, they're not teaching that. I have some experience with STEM. From what I can see, they're not teaching any of that. Can it become an issue? Yes. And that's why I agree with all of them. We need to be proactive about keeping our eyes and ears open. But I got nervous a minute ago and left off half of what I was gonna say in my introduction. So I just want to go back and say that, there, see, it happens again. Oh my gosh, I want to sit down and stand back up, but I know that I can't do that. So, oh gosh, I apologize.
All right. We have a question from?
Boyd.
Hi, Boyd.
Good boy. Please.
And my question, like, it's just a quick answer. I have only one candidate for an answer for everybody. But I realize school board elections are non-Carson, but there are fundamental differences between party platforms, differences which I believe will affect decisions you will make for the children if you are elected to the school board. So I was wondering if you would tell us if you are a voter in a primary, in general elections, and if so, which party do you usually vote for? Republican, Democrat, or maybe some of these?
I'm proud to say I'm a Republican.
No, wrong answer.
You know, I don't, I don't consider myself a Democrat or a Republican. Do I vote? Yes. Do I vote for the party? No. I vote for the issues. If you, I've taken a lot of different political tests through all these Facebook things and through other media deals. If you look at, if you look at a box with the little thing that's in the middle, I'm right there in the middle. So I look at the issues. Do I lean left on it some? Yes. Do I lean right on it some? Yes. So it just depends on the issue at that time and what you wanna look at.
First, I think politics should be kept up at schools, but we realize that since school, we can't have that. I am a Republican. I vote Republican on most all issues. But as you just said, I did try to go, what's my duty to do? But I'm still on my swing lately.
And I vote Republican. I love the Republican platform and what they stand for and it just lines with my Christian values.
I vote Republican. And I'm gonna have to confess, in the early 2000s, I was a congressional intern for Charlie Stenholm, who was a Democrat in Washington.
Just with a question first. So I vote, I am a conservative. I do vote Republican, but I also agree with Mr. Lowry that politics really don't have a place on the school board. Teacher retention, that, this is why I'm running, to retain the teachers that we have. You guys, we have some amazing educators, indicators, and they are leaving. And we have got to stop that. And if you have the right teachers in there, if you have good, strong, solid educators who stay on, then they are going to take care of the CRT and the, they are going to handle all of that, you guys. We need to keep those teachers. We need to retain them. That is why I'm running. That.
I'm a Republican. My definition of conservative is wetters. A conservative says less rules and regulations, not more. Government is out of my business. I can't sit there and say I'm a conservative and then mandate all these things on people because I don't like them. So my faith, luckily, I have that. If folks don't have faith, I have that stuff. But I have faith. I run off of faith. And that's where my values come from, my kids' values come from. That's what I want to instill, and I want our community to instill that. If we're a village, let's get together, let's raise our kids, let's pray, and these policies and these regulations and this noise in the room can go away, we can educate our kids.
Short answer, I've been a registered Republican since I was 18 and have voted in every election, but I have always done my research. And I do not walk into that booth, and I don't vote for anybody unless I know who they are. You know, you get in there, you see all the judges, look, if I don't know who that is, I'm not going to vote for them. I just think that's not the way to do it. And have I voted for Democrats? Yes, I have. But I vote for whoever is the best person. Having said all that, I agree with the majority of people. Politics has got to be left out. But we understand the school district. We know that politics is infiltrated every avenue, every part of our life. But when it comes down to the school district, it's a totally different animal than some of these other political things. We've got to do what's best with kids and the teachers, and that's really the animal in school.
So my favorite Republican, I'll put that out there, but I run the right way. I vote conservative. If I don't know, I don't vote. But I tend to vote conservative on different.
At the school board, we're looking at these kids and teachers. Yes, I am a Republican that votes on the Republican side again. If I don't know who you are or not heard any of your issues, I'm not going to vote for you, because we all know there are people on the Republican Party and the Democratic Party that don't necessarily line up with their platforms. But as a school board member, again, it's our job to make sure these kids have the best environment possible, with the best teachers that can do that for them. And we have the trust that they will do what we need them to do. Not, like Scott said, we have grievance processes, we have ability to go and meet with people and discuss what is going on and how we move or whatever we need to, if that's the case.
I do vote in all of the elections. And I enjoy the opportunity to have a voice in vote. I do not have a particular political party. I agree about the issues and try to make the best choice. In my public education and serving the school board, it is important that we value everyone's theory and that we put our attention on the children and the teachers. Certainly, we agree with you about the work and the name. It is, it's a choice that we make in this neighborhood.
I may take a point of privilege here and water off spirit a little bit and ask the candidates too. Since policy questions, the board, some policies that you can't control something, we've heard tonight, and we've also heard that we need to unpack it in some cases. Physically, traditionally, the schools have been run and funded through property taxes. And there's a lot of talk about property taxes are going to, we're going to cut their property taxes, which has never happened. But is there enough money in your school system now? And if there's enough money, could there be less money? Do you have any ideas of ways to get by with less money in the case of lowering the property taxes?
I think the way you can get by with less money is, yes, yes. As part of your business, a lot of companies and models have stats, called a stat. You always test the stat at the top. When you start doing that, you'll start losing some of your, I guess, the happiness about wanting to work. So there's a lot to that. Can you learn with less money? Sure you can. We all go into recesses, we've all done. Is it the right thing to do? I don't know. It's a touchy subject, but it can be done. It's going to have to be done very carefully, and you're going to have to figure out who can and cannot be expendable, and then you'll have that.
You've got to keep in mind too, that in Texas, state picks up the balance. There's Sunday, we're allotted X amount, a little over $5 per kid. The payroll comes in from your property taxes. If that goes up, all of a sudden, we're paying more of that balance, and we want to bring that back down so the state pays our fair share. That's what's going on now with bringing up the property taxes. So in theory, we shouldn't be losing money per kid if we're, if the state's doing their separate job. So we've got to put pressure on state and make sure they do their job.
Yeah, I would actually kind of agree with what Scott's saying. I think, you know, the answer is not can we get by with less? Because I don't think anybody wants to skip on our education of our kids. I mean, that's our future. We have to invest in them like anything else. You have to invest in these kids. We want them to be productive citizens in the future. So, you know, what's going to happen though, if nobody's seen that here in Wise County, it doesn't matter if it's Cater, Boyd, Paradise, it doesn't matter. I mean, you're seeing the real estate values, and you're going to get sticker shock this week if you haven't already gotten it. The real estate values are going through the roof. So it's not a matter of, well, can we get by with less? We're going to have rental revenue in here. The matter is establishing the tax rate, and that's what we have, that we can control. And so we're going to have to figure out a balance in there. But we're keen to invest in our kids no matter what.
And I think it's more about allocating the money correctly, kind of what they were saying to the places that need it. You guys are killing me on this.
This has been my biggest pet peeve for years. We spent $680,000 on a cafe that was as big as this room, probably smaller, that we only used for two years in the high school, and $50,000 on furniture for it. I'm pretty sure we could have paid some more teacher salaries. We could have provided more materials for the CTE program. We could have done a lot of things now. But basically, we jump up here and say, we needed it because we closed campus for lunch at that time. I think there could have been a better way to provide that space for the kids for lunch besides spending three quarters of $100,000.
I'm breaking the rules, but I remember. So desks in the high school, for an example, the desks are expensive. They're huge. They do not fit in our classrooms. I had 31 kids per class the year that I left, and they, I did not have enough space for them, mainly because the desks were too big. So we spent all of this money on these fancy desks that don't even fit in the classroom, and the teachers hated them because you couldn't put them in groups. They were like rounded corners. It was hard to put them in groups. So to me, we're spending money sometimes on, we're allocating our money to things that are pointless, useless, when we should be focusing our money on other things.
Yeah, can we cut? Yeah, we can cut. Is it the right thing to do? I, you know, I don't know. I do know that in Bridgeport, our teachers are some of the lowest paid teachers in Wise County and in the area. You know, is it smart to cut? I don't know. If it has to do with teacher plan, I'd say no, we need to aim for it. You know, we talked about retention of our teachers. You know, that's got to stop. We've got to keep our good teachers. And we're also seeing kids leave the school district, so we can't have that happen either.
School finance is a really muddy issue in this state. And it's not just now, it has been for quite some time. You have your tax rate, and you have your appraisal. And it's the appraisals that are going up. We already have legislation that has capped the tax rate, and we're actually in a tax compression period for the tax rate right now. And I think, as you said, it always suggests, so as your businesses are coming in and paying taxes, and your homeowners, then the state is paying less. Unfortunately, in Northwest ISD, we are part of what they call recapture. We're under a chapter 49. It was a 41. And so we're in the position where we are actually sending money back to the state. And so we've had to cut budgets for the last three years in a row in order to try to balance the budget in a vast rural district. Currently, in this next year, we will send over $30 million back to the state, but that does not go to education.
Y'all are going to hate what I'm about to say. So I just want to preface that. Do we need to cut property taxes? Who knows? I used to work at Gaylord when it opened, Gaylord Texan in Great Line. And, you know, it all starts, started in, what, 1993 when Governor Ann Richards instituted the lottery. It's supposed to pay for education, and now it's paying for the veterans as well. Two great plans. Where does all that money really go? Education, a little bit. Veterans, a little bit. Mainly it goes to the General Fund of Texas. If they need to rework the lottery, get it back where it's supposed to depend, get it back to the education and to the veterans. No. Can we still cut the property taxes? Who knows? But that's for them to think.
Can we reduce what we spend at the district? Absolutely. Every district can. It's all going lean. Do we want to? Do we want to deprive our children of the programs that they need to become successful adults in this country? Absolutely not. I have no trouble paying my taxes as long as I know that the funds are being allocated properly. Allocation is, I think, is actually a key issue. Making sure that we, like they spoke about, are investing the money in the programs for children and for property structure needs to not waste. You know, we're going to have waste in Boyd here pretty soon. We didn't account for the growth that's coming to this area properly. We're going to waste money, taxpayer dollars, temporary building, temporary utility. And we could have got out and headed the curve and had permanent structures put in place that would last for years, and those taxpayer dollars wouldn't be available to us.
I think first you need to look at the data that comes in eighth grade. When how still five in 2015 came about, you have to do a four-year plan with all eighth graders and parents, find all funding enforcement. You need to look at that data and from those interest inventories of that data, and what do you want to offer at the school district where you have the right teacher in the right place, and you're looking at those master schedules, and you, like, I can look at Chico, but I now I'll tell you, there's at least one and a half full-time employees that's wasted in the master schedule. I can absolutely tell you. Number two, follow the money. So we're spending like nearly a billion dollars for the stadiums for star testing, and now we're going to do it online. So we say, money, where's that money going to go? I'll bet you it goes right down to the general fund and not to the education fund. Just like the money that Ann was saying came from, that we pin back to Robinhood, it doesn't go back to the education fund. It goes back to the general fund of Texas. Follow the money from the state and how that comes back to our ISD.
It's all about group unity. It's with money and time. We actually just had a four-day school protest in Chico. It was not communicated very well. Kind of rushed them to a public vote on opinion with no data. And then we find out that that actually makes them more efficient. That tells you that they're not being efficient with their time, they're not being efficient with their money. It would, it would position that lose money, but the forced decisions that need to be made become more efficient, and if you go through a public work, you go through a home life, same thing. We all have facts that we can trim, and it makes us better on the bank.
All right. In order to get to our other races, I think we're going to wrap it up. I'd like to thank all the candidates for running. It's important that people participate, and I do appreciate you all. Thanks to yourselves on the line, getting out there and offering your services, and good luck. Thank you.